May I say evening, Father, in this time of the Holy Spirit, amen. Most precious loving Father, we humble hearts and the renowned souls, you look up to your mercy and compassion. As we acknowledge you as the source of everything. Thank you for the wonderful day of life, thank you for all the blessings. You be still upon us, these beautiful, peace-loving, and compassionate people. Honor God, guiding light of all occasions. Thank you for the government in which we belong and without which we... And without which no civilized society can survive. Thank you for giving us share of our responsibility. Honor God, thank you for the presence. For the members of the council who must contribute, our sitting officer. Please handle to the redas over the way on our meeting session. All these things we ask and this prayer, this name we pray, amen. Amen, Father, in this time of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Honorable Consular, raise our right hand and offer the blessing of the sitting officer. I am here with young members and I'm greeted by the open and with yours of the references. That I am young and a good girl of a consistent way. In the report of our history is at most carefully. I believe our experience, our strength, and my reality for the constitution of. As I will refer to this honor legislation. Please Almighty, have my name on heart. That I shall be true and never to difference and ever be the one.
The ninety-seven regular sessions now called order. Who is the wrong call? My request, Madam Speaker, please.
Monsieur, good morning, have your attention for your attendance in the base of your session. Honorable Prowellesto Palmas.
Yes, sir.
Honorable Richard Emnangido. Honorable Agent A. J. Nastudis. Honorable Julie H. Nantil. Honorable E. N. O. Eden Dass. Honorable Dario Siroman. Honorable Ronan Pidi Maya. Honorable Eduardo L. Rendell Dikin. Honorable Ricky C. Ojo Ano. Honorable Reniday Pretzani Makino, that fifteen. Honorable Dato Dino Ito Naitai. Honorable Presiding Officer, Honorable Agent A. J. Nastudis, and Honorable Reniday Pretzani Makino. Are on thirty-five, Honorable Dato Dino Ito Naitai. Resonate, and Honorable Richard Emnangido, standing at the mercy. There were seven members present in this call.
Honorable Speaker, there will be four of these services. So, good morning to all the members of this all this table. Morning, I call for Speaker, Honorable Speaker, and all the staff of the San Juan Department. And to this position. And to all the Thomasians watching. This live video. To start with, my request, Honorable Nanda, for the reading of the previous meeting.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Considering that all the members of this council has given a pocket in advance. So not to delay the proceedings. I want to dispense the reading of the previous meetings and journal of proceedings. Of the ninety-sixth regular session, the San Juan Bayan San Tomás, dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-one. Final order.
Thank you, Honorable Nanda, and very small motion to dispense the reading of the previous meetings and journal of proceedings. Of the ninety-sixth regular session of the San Juan Bayan dated June twenty-two thousand three hundred. Eighty seconds, Honorable. This is candid, Honorable Tom, Honorable Matitia, Honorable Romano, Honorable Di Maya, Honorable Gerete, Honorable Senjuan. Here the objection, hearing now, Honorable Speaker. For the adoption, Honorable Speaker.
Mister Presiding Officer, I know to pass resolution number one hundred forty-four. Series of twenty twenty-one. Adapting the previous minutes and journal of proceedings. Of the ninety-sixth regular session of the San Juan Bayan dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-one.
Thank you, Honorable Matitia. There is now a motion for the passage of resolution number one hundred forty-four. Series of two thousand three hundred. Adapting the previous minutes of the journal of proceedings of the ninety-sixth regular session. Of the San Juan Bayan dated June twenty-eight, two thousand three hundred. Eighty seconds, Honorable. This is candid, but all members present, there's no any objection. Hearing now, the motion is approved. We will round the seat for every hour. Honorable Gerete.
Thank you very much, Honorable Presiding Officer, all members of the council. People of San Tomás, our chief executive, the mayor, Honorable Ernesto Delanvista. This is in connection with the urgent master that fills calendar today. Regarding the request to all honorable senators. Through Senate President Honorable Vicente C. Soto III. To pass and throw the bill to the evening barangay to the even municipality of San Tomás. Ravens of down and north end into a regular barangay. This action was resolved of our meeting. With the good Congressman Alan Taduhadi last Saturday morning in Penabo. He was telling us that the Congress, being in the lower house, the House of Representatives. Has already passed the bill. And that has got to be coordinated into a Republican Act with the Senate. I told him that we already have passed actually a resolution. To all the senators also through the Senate President Vicente Soto III. But he asked again that we need to have a treasure resolution. That's why the title of this resolution, Madam Speaker, must be a treasure resolution requesting, okay? So because of the urgency of the matter within the term. He is appealing that this council would pass that resolution again. Just to remind the House of Senate. That there is a need for the approval of a regulation of barangay to the even into a regular barangay. They have long been suffering from the absence of internal revenue allotment. I think this is high time that we will in support of Congressman Alan Taduhadi. Who again recommended this work in the Congress. That he has done his best deliberating, defending. And at the end approved the house bill that he sponsored. So there is a need to marry with a Senate version. And that will become a Republican. That's all, Mister Presiding Officer, thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Gerete. Before we proceed, I would like to read a verse about Richard Emnangido. Start the speaker. Honorable, Honorable Gerete, for the previous.
Thank you, Sir, Mr. Presiding Officer. To the members of this office body. The people of San Tomás, Don Juan de Xicito, Honorable New York, and Mr. Juan Vista. And Miss Eto'o, and her birthday today. To all of you, what's your good morning? Last August, I'd like to. We have a meeting with the members of the National dedicators Association. The officers and employees. Together with the Department of the Agri and the Form. And the Department of the Office, who didn't inspire to the San Tomás. And doing a meeting with the officers, the Federation President, and dedicators association. We found out that there are so many problems with regards to the relegation system are skewed. And during our meeting. The Department of Agri, Department of the Agri and the Form, headed by Mom Flora Contes. Together with Engineer Monaca. They have a plan to support our rice farmers. Especially on the financing assistance. And according to Mom Flor. The Department of Agri and the Form have a program known as Accord. And they are willing to support its farmers. Not only those farmers who are heavily affected with Posayong wealth. But those farmers are willing to avail their program. And it's time that the farmers of Lungao. The feeders headed by Mom Siloy. They are asking for financial assistance for especially for the people. And according to Mom Flor. The Department of Agri and the Form are willing to support that program. Provided that the area must be titled with guard divisions. So we will get a listing of that area if the area is under the Department of Agri and the Form. But according to Flor, those farmers who are willing to avail their programs. Eighty farmers, provided that one of them farmers is land title. So to discuss this matter, to solve this problem. The scheme of the Department of Agri and the Form, I would like to request. Mom Luz for boost. Engineer Monaca and Mom Flora Contes. For a committee hearing this coming Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Honorable Speaker. Any other? One or more of these previous hour? No more, so we will proceed to question hour.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. I'd like to add to those person invited to the chairman of the board of their hearts. They are going to invite the Madgo, which is a different person in the video. So that he will be able to facilitate what he will want, provided by this position we have.
Okay, thank you, Honorable. Honorable Nanda. Wait, I don't know what I will read on this first hour. So we will proceed to. Communication. Ah, really, and we're gonna propose measures, communications are basically.
For measures committed to university administration and the organization of one item. Amendment, second sixty, the zero four article of chapter six of the municipality of San Tomás. The twenty twelve, the zero seven, eleven two. Of the municipality of San Tomás, the payment of rent of free on stones in the public market. To every thirty and daily of the month. This measure is in the rules by the board of the San Juan.
This measure is referred to committee or the hanging of the power. Honorable Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. May I call for the presence of the president. Already for the final draft of this party, and certainly to the authority. The first meeting.
Any other remarks for the speaker? Huh, proceed.
That is all for first thing, Mr. Presiding Officer, for many page on only one. The current resolution number seventy-six is the twenty-nine, by the community of Lungao, this municipality. Recommending Mrs. Juanita G. De Devo, by the lady, Honorable Ricardo D. De Devo Junior. To fill in the vacant position as member of the eleven cops, the San Juan Cartageway. Of the Ray of Lungao, this municipality for a proper information and the area of things. That is, that is all, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Any comments, remarks? Today, the way we proceed, for committee reports. A doctor of committee reports and committee meetings. Committee report number one three eight. And one three, Honorable Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mister Presiding Officer, for committee report number. One three eight. The committee on rules and for the revision of laws for the losses and distributions. Met to discuss about the draft resolutions series of twenty twenty-one. Confirming by my executive order number zero one twenty twenty-one issued by Honorable Yorobio Antoyo. Unung barangay of San Jose. An order reorganizing, reconstituting barangay council. For the protection of children of barangays San Jose and San Tomás down in the north. The discussion was with Costa's chair, myself. Honorable Mayor Nanda San as the vice chair. Honorable Eduardo Yerente, and Honorable Ricky N. Juan's members. Others present were the vice mayor, Honorable Gabriel Eric Estela. Honorable Richard Emnangido, Honorable Dario G. Romano, and Honorable Rona Di Maya. In the discussion was, it is, this, this, being a special body. A barangay council for the protection of children, Honorable Minister Panalan. We can not oppose in the reconstitution. But in the make of part, one number of the council. Our Honorable Mayor Nanda San. Ask for perhaps made some clarification. Why that barangay San Jose. Thinking it's so late in the reconstitution of the said policy. We made some network with the secretary. And we found out that there is a new memorandum from the Department of Interior Plan. The SWT. That in councils like this, especially for the barangay council for the protection of children. There has got to be a need for a representative from youth sector, youth sector. That's why we have to salute Honorable Antoyo. He might be the first barangay to have reconstituted and included. In the said council, the representation being asked for by the MS, the BSWT. So that ends the discussion. The chair would like to move for the adoption.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. There is now a motion for the doctor's report number one three eight, series of two thousand three hundred. Any comment, remarks? Okay, Honorable Nanda San.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. The process, no? Why barangay San Jose was going to reconstitute their. VCPC in the last quarter, last day of the fiscal quarter, I mean. So in that case, I believe you would like to remind all those barangays. To submit as the reconstitute VCPC, no? In order for us to approve, no? In our decision.
Mister Presiding Officer, the suggestion of Honorable Nanda San is an order. And we will expect indeed a flood of requests for reconstituting. For the adoption of their reconstitution. And reorganization of their VCPC. Okay. That motion, that motion is standing.
Thank you, Honorable. Any other clarification, remarks? Let's say I would like to ask if who will have. What kind, how did they come up with the selection of this youth sector? Is it the automatic appointment of the history or any other youth number?
Mister Presiding Officer, I am not so clear on this aspect. But I think the memorandum from the BSWT of the office of Unung barangay. And not the guy that was included there. And I think that had followed and had that qualified representation.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Honorable Gerete.
With respect to the theory of barangay, the sir, actually, the this page is a traumatic member of the VCPC. But considering that there are youth leaders coming from different schools. I, I, I assume that those youth leaders is also be part of that executive board. Especially some of the, they are, they are contributing as the. One, the representative some of the youth support. The history is an umbrella, and then those organization in this school. Was considered as part of the members who serve the general.
Thank you, Honorable Gerete. Any other clarification, remarks? Hearing now, the motion is approved, Honorable.
Thank you very much, Mister Presiding Officer, thank you for the query. I believe you are all satisfied. We expect also the Honorable Nanda San to read the same remarks of the VCPC. Oh, Nana? Oh, yes, you? So we will expect more. Nana, how many years? Where daddy?
At the most point, I go to the institution.
Oh, city, I recall nice you to be the first, perhaps? Sorry, good? Okay, the next committee report is committee report number one three nine. By the Senate meeting, with myself as the chair, Honorable Mayor Nanda San as the vice chair. Honorable Eduardo Yerente, Honorable Ricky N. Juan, those members. Others present were Honorable Gabriel Eric Estela, Honorable Richard Emnangido, Honorable Dario Romano. And Honorable Rona Di Maya. This is yet about the executive order number zero two one hundred and one. By Honorable Yorobio Antoyo, Unung barangay of San Jose. An order reorganizing, reconstituting the barangay political solid management board. Solid Waste Management Board of barangays San Jose and San Tomás down in the north. Again, that was always the positive move by the chair of the members of the committee. That this be adopted. And again, that query by Honorable Mayor Nanda San. Why that only barangay San Jose, Unung barangay, so bitter? In the second quarter of the year. I can have my own opinion.
Last day of the fiscal quarter.
Oh, last day of the second quarter. I have my own opinion. I think we all believe that the barangay of Unung barangay. Passed the prerogative at any time to reconstitute or reorganize. His council or board in this case. Because there are so many circumstances that a barangay captain can reorganize. He is a special body like the Solid Waste Management Board in case. One, there is error segregation. Second, there might be some gaps in the board. So that has got to be replaced or reconstituted at any time. So that the BSWMB will still function normally. Mister Presiding Officer, I know for adoption.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable. Do you have any more motion for the doctor's report number one three nine, series of two thousand three hundred? Is there any comment, remarks? Hearing now, the motion is approved. Committee report number one four zero, Honorable Di Maya.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. Committee report number one four zero. During this joint committee, the committee of transportation, transportation. And committee on health and subjects of disease. So during the committee meeting and hearing, present your story as the chairperson of the transportation. And present during the committee, we have Honorable Mayor Nanda San as chairperson of the health. Honorable Dario Romano, the vice chairperson of transportation and member of the health. Honorable Eduardo Yerente, vice chairperson of health and member of the transportation. Honorable Richard Emnangido, member of the transportation. Honorable Julie H. Nantil, member of health. And me, Honorable Prowellesto Palmas. And they're present during the committee meeting and hearing. We have our former vice mayor and the meeting chairperson. Honorable Gabriel Eric Estela. Honorable Ricky N. Juan. And Ms. Kristal K. Tabahonda, representative from the NSTB, BBO staff. And Mister Angel Lloyd Bakadia, from the vice mayor's office staff. And Ms. Landa R. Rosque, from the derby staff. So the subject matter is a draft, base resolution number series of twenty twenty-one. I request the director, Ake, in this. Of the RSW, RSW, original director, director. Department of Social Welfare Development Field Office, June eleven. To include the MCS of the first drivers whose two thousand nineteen franchise. Were not renewed due to COVID nineteen pandemic. And to consider him to receive financial assistance from the office of the special assistant to the president. So during the committee and meeting hearing. And some of our members of the committee. and some of our members of the committee has regarding the data. So one of the recommendations of the members of the council that we have to finalize all the list of the MCS of drivers and drivers. We need to finalize the data. So I believe the MTRB youth unit or the youth board have released of the not renewed franchise. So this is a follow-up resolution. Then last week, we had to pass the resolution. Those complaining, we have 174, but we are not able to validate. So this, another resolution. Those, wala na renewed ang ilang franchise from the MTRB. So again, one of our members is not an nobody object of this resolution because para namin sa mga exuna ko na natin kwan sa COVID-19. So I move committee report number 140.
Thank you, Honorable Andoio. Motion for the doctor's committee report number 140. Any comment or remarks? Here we have, Honorable. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. This is like what we want. But because I don't think you have the authority of resolution, it might be granted. But, Mr. Presiding Officer, it's not from this city park, driving municipality. There are still another group of people, drivers, driving a single motor. There's many the name of this group of drivers, single motor. And I believe he has to be resolved in our office of the year. One, I have to remind Mr. Presiding Officer because he are complaining, they are not complaining. Why say that we the poor people cannot build the program? The money is from the national and from the office of the president. They not be able to make a building. Okay, Honorable Andoio. This is a motion for motor sector for hire. So maybe you can suggest them to be office of the industry for another round of money. But it is not part of this, this is a because this is the difficulty of this business. We can say I work for drivers. So maybe we will, maybe we will assign the secretary to maybe just, Honorable. I think they can just dial the security department para makipinatila. I think we just accept the company's for him, Honorable Andoio.
Thank you, Honorable. I believe that is a really good manifestation of Honorable Romano. Okay, kung ano ang unta naong, kung ano ang resulty, results na tabi ay kanunay, sa island, utol-utol, kuwan ang today's single motors, na ngangsayo. So right now is the chairman of the transportation. I believe he has all the coffee of those persons involved sa mga single motors. Madalasig or ano, buatan kunanong resolution. Kung mga kadawat per dili, okay, mahal na, importante yata gini, mo ako ang part ng unta, kadahan, kujin na. Pero kato legitimate, kung mga ngangsayo sa single motor. Thank you.
Okay, Honorable. Actually, there is no legitimate driver operator of these single motors. Hello, they are not registered in the government. So what I guess, actually, they are not franchise owner. Only they say it. So actually, they are all, they are legal, legal occupation. But tolerated, grow out the Philippines.
So it is, I stand with the Honorable President. What I mean is that I believe in every barangay, there is really an official of president-elect by that organization. So they listed by their president, that is really the kung ano ang unta mga kauban nila. And I'm gonna say this time, I believe all the listed people must submit it to the general committee on transportation. If I am a speaker, Honorable. So thank you. I, Honorable, yeah. I just like to read from the members of the council. That the single motor is a most organized committee. Then some, there is a network of, no, na two ang ato ang radio, may trans mga transport sector. So tamatus ya, mga ato mga single motors is a ngangsayo, but they are not legal. So, ang ato ang radio, ah, I tried what, I've already mentioned, the single motor was na recognize na sa sackang mga barangay. So then, one process nga, may lahan documents sa Duli. So sa Duli, kay local administration association. So, nata'y mga napagwiel na doon, nagalotan, mga single motors na nabuhay. Sina, napuipan niya ginabuhay. So nata'y mga nasulun na sila karoon sa Duli, to fight and castro. So diyan na to, i, ano na to, i-involuntarily na to sila. Pero dili pa na to, mapeter karoon, ang tanan, eh, almost 800 members and two single members. So we have 28 officers that de-respect all barangays. So, um, locating city is anikangot na makasubukan ko kayo da and thank you for them para makabangon ko na to mga mga single motors. So that's all I can say.
Thank you, Honorable. Yeah, okay, so, I have to talk to them. Honorable Yerente.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I'd like to ask the Chair of Transportation. Uh, the Chair, here. No organize na ba ang mga single motors per barangay? As I identify na to para ako po na lang. Uh, oh, man, no, nice, and they always handle it. So, basay, basay basis din sa validation na para makaapey pasiraan. What if katupuan ibang mga single motors nakadawat wala pa sa mga bahak idaw? Basapay, kisapay, validay basay basis din, no? Ang kaka sila is mga single motor na, na biyani po. Kaya sometimes, maybe there are some single motors na personal na, wala pa ngangsayo. How do you validate?
Uh, based on the orientation, and then before the orientation in respect to barangay. So, ang mga validation is, ang mismo ang ilang chairman, ang officers na po na sila, uh, single motor wala ba na diba? Rebiyani po sila. So sometimes, dahil babuti na nga, terbangdi, na usahay kurang delusyon, delusyon na mga ngangsayo. Kung target-target na ba, are they qualified? Yes, kay qualified sila, kay tumo, memberlanduk sila sa mga organization. Okay, so far, how many members of barangay? Sa, uh, almost 800 members of these single motors.
31,000?
Oh. So per barangay na, group per barangay? Yes, yeah. All barangays except, um, barangay babawa, wala pa din sila ng mga barangays. Okay, within it, it is barangays, no? It is barangays, no? Wala, it is barangay babawa ngayon, no? Depende ba po na sila mga officers na masasila ngayon? Yes, so far, the barangay babawa, it's real, no? Kurang na hati, mga hiya, kayo, boy, on way of transportation because a big part of the work, most of the work. Kung ba't uktong, dyan ang red book sila. Okay, che, che, sedapat, ah, basic na lang, malgrah, mga tangan, tabas sila. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You're right, I'm a barangay. Any other remarks, for the issue? Okay, Honorable. So, next week, I'm visiting, we'd like to request the basis of BSWT. We discussed this matter about single motor, uh, whole single motor applying in municipality for the master to obtain the special assistance of the president and the deputy officer. It's coming, instantly, for a committee hearing and today. Okay, Honorable Romano. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Any other remarks, for the issue? On this committee report number 140. Honorable Andoio.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it, Mr. President. Uh, as far as this committee report is concerned, uh, it is good that this body again requested for the national uh, benefits that somehow we can avail the adult. But I just would like to correct my things, especially the, Honorable Di Maya, who also manifested with regards to the single motors. Uh, it is good if they wait also a bit. And considering that the number of the the single motors has a, uh, naasamay mga uh, devotion especially sa kanatan. Uh, the, uh, as a single transport group, kaputang, initabaw ang ilang rated positions as far as uh, support transport. But maybe if this, this group was organized, as Honorable Di Maya mentioned earlier, perhaps it could be also considered especially, uh, the the area where they will having such terminals or point of um, ilahang mga designation. But it should be also considered during the discussion completely properly put ang isignisyon ngayon, okay? If we will notice, isa ka sa, o asa lang sila piyino kuwan, wala na palayag. But since naano sila organization and they organized and we mentioned that they are part of the rest of the members. So we need na position na, the top of the organization na possible, we need also given, i, i write areas na pwede sila mag-terminan, okay, para, uh, kay, pinyo mo, um, the national members, especially sa congressional, isuporto, uh, naasali din sa dapd. Eh, doon mga tataang, uh, one hundred, um, um, maka, one hundred dia sa uh, dia sa, uh, so it should be properly designated, impossible. Para ring sila, kung niya, uh, dili sila kayo, mapita dia sa ato ang kasumay. That is something I would suggest to the president.
Uh, may I request, uh, for this topic, if you want to discuss the issue for the department of public health because we are focusing on the motor sector, right? Para may kita mo, okay? It is a
The national center?
Ah, siya, yeah. Ma-klabeng, Honorable Andoio. Para mga, atay na to po sa single motors. I believe that wala na siguro na po is on same, para kayo at sa single motors, uh, drivers. So, any other remarks on this matter, on the committee report number 140? No more, so the motion for, uh, Di Maya, Riqui, and the others.
Committee report number 141, Honorable Yerente, and 142 also.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, for committee report number 142, since 2021. Uh, the members of the council, your strong Mr. Presiding Officer, Honorable Dario Romano, the Vice Chairperson. We have Honorable Sadang, the member. We have Honorable Riqui La Tuhan, member. Those who are present, we have Honorable Doctor Eric Esteta, our municipal Vice Mayor. We have Honorable Yudi Itz Matikilia, Honorable Landa San, Honorable Ricky La Tuhan. We have all invited Jess, our municipal Cultureist. We get any other review. We have India Ray Sagop, acting PDC, and Mrs. Estrel Gassimore, the Procheperson of La Cola, the barangay of life. And something further is to upgrade the committee on the request of the individual banana growers in barangay Lumaw would appeal intended for heavy treatment. Uh, our Proche, the barangay Lumaw, Proche, the barangay, Mrs. Estrel Gassimore, requesting other change, uh, that August money and to have assistance regardless to the fuel of heavy treatment. You know, the heavy treatment system was ready in the area provided by official government. However, there is no enough fuel intended to operate. And according to Mrs. Estrel, the whole, the whole area to be developed is more or less 50 cars. And according to India Ray Sagop, he manifested that there is no appropriate funds intended for the fuel of heavy treatment, particularly the number of banana growers. And there is a fuel, but fully inherit, uh, very small amount. And Mrs. Estrel Gassimore has, uh, asked the group not to accommodate, he suggested only any amount or any number of workers to the, intended for the operation. So, the, our municipal acting PDC chairman, India Sagop, um, according to him, will validate the area. He will send the personnel to check the area for possible assistance regardless to, you know, fuel at the same time for the education of that area. So I move for the adoption of this committee report.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Yerente. There is no motion for the adoption of committee report number 141, 321. Any comments or remarks?
Yeah? Honorable, Honorable.
During the discussion, I believe the other members of this council, no?
During the discussion, I believe the individual members of this town, you know, um, naghikadahan o, higayon, si Vice na maui, maui mangulo, mga minitat, mga minitat pamaagi, matawangan na kuwan, ang adjusting party, no? Sana may, na matapos sa ni Vice. Gusa nga na tapaktaba ni Aning nong matawana. Kada duha, um, um, in kuwan, in kuwan, may mangminis, na ay nakabuta kabsit, na ay buta ng unlib. If it is unlib, unlib lang siya, kung madudri man, mapibukha, mubasa, reabsent, di unlib. Kung unlib lang, kung may kaligurang di lang mapibukha, hindi namang, kadudri man ng reabsent, di unlib. So, para lang, Honorable President.
Okay, at, according, Ma'am Estrella, if you see things as, any amount for fuel but, uh, okay man, wala po, pero believe eh, na sa makatapang, sila man ako allocation mahatag. And we computed that, uh, it will reach, the fuel will reach three to four million for the fifteen cars of the car. We have, because a few way magamit operator is eighty, more or less, not eighty thousand, sixty to eighty thousand, so.
Eighty to one hundred twenty.
Oh, eighty to one hundred twenty thousand, ten each times. So, time fifteen, I would give to four million, so, kahatap ako icontribute, di man na albo of thirty thousand, siguro, marata sa kita, but, no, if we like contribution, it's not. So, times ten, times twelve, two thousand, thirty four thousand, eh, gorma na sa revolution na nasa sa heavy equipment. So, dili, ta makataba in the way, all those siguro, pero, the most kita kawayo is, makaya di tatabang sa national government, pero dili, pa, karoon, eh, tapos na matan, we are in a business here, maybe we can ask help sa ato regional DA, ng mga ginat si next year, so, mayon na, magbibutan, at, this is just my, uh, uh, ang, ako lang is suggestion, yeah. We can file a resolution against to the national governments, particularly the department of agriculture, where i consider nila, um, banana industry, maghahadid, magsit, ito, farming, ay, to, uh, corn and.
Rice farming.
Rice farming, because of the rosary of wealth. So, maybe ma consider nila, in that way, makatabang ka, because we are, ramasasal legislation, moong mga kanyang ramas, but financially, wala kasi may magramang, gerys po lamang, ato.
Uh, Mr. President, officer, siguro, karoon mo, is immediately lahat ng land sa pangroster, na napuang equipment, so, kung wala, tapata ako sa rin, uh, ako's suggestions, for this, any about, anyway, according to Mrs. Estrella Gassimore, wala na sanangayong buonggubilat, kainakangoy mga farmer downer, napoy kapilanis, napoy kapilanis, po, siguro na to mga farmers dun nga, wala na ngayon, eh, may salibin na to, wala na sanangayong gubilat, dun, pagunggubilat, dun, siguro, ha? Ina remember, para just na, kainatong mo, do, kain, immediately, na, kainan lang nila.
Okay.
Yeah, then another one, Mr. President, officer, is, ato, the department of agri and reform, through their, uh, through their program, ato, afford. According to my plan, uh, kina akinos ang wasa chiers, po, ngangabon, po. So, ako na po, listing sa to mga farmers, then submit na to sa iya na, siguro, wala na mapasalitik, ato, most, ang listing na to mga farmers, is submit na to sa iya, together with title number, and, uh, isa na to mga title, kung agri and reform, bato, or, or DC, or original, para nga ang the department of agri and reform, makataba as is na sa iya, through, sa iya program, ato, maka, from true loan. So, and nga, mga bahay, siguro, makataba, kanya. Kung satu, alot, suggestion, ato, action, na robo na san, immediately, na kinaan lang sa mga farmers, pagunggubilat, transburta, whatever, about, may extend na po sila. And, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, maybe after this, this session, or we will talk, okay, na po, icontribute, it's the moment, so, ano, lang, okay, okay?
Okay, okay, tento, para lang, di pa nisipan, para kong dili.
Okay, okay. Okay, after this session, we will, uh, okay. Any other remarks on like this committee report number one four one? Aside from our contribution. Man, so, the motion is approved and adopted. Committee report number one four two.
Committee report number, under, under four one, committee report number one four two, since two thousand twenty one. Uh, the certain members of the committee, uh, for, for present, just calling, chat person, we have honorable David Romano, vice chair, we have honorable Sainado, Honorable Hymaya, Honorable, uh, Davis Matikia, Honorable Danny Lendasan, Honorable Ricky Nuduan, we have also the presence of our vice mayor, Honorable Dr. Estella, our invited guests, we have India Indian Agorio, India Sagop, and, um, Estrella Gassimore. With, uh, subject matter is equally on the plans and programs intended for the individual banana growers, those areas was already infected with banana, banana disease and of your crop conversion. And we have, uh, according to our PD C, uh, advising, India Ray Sagop, manifested that the banana disease which is greatly affecting the banana industry, he advised that the banana growers must have an option to have dirt with from either rice or corn or any, uh, products that has, uh, a drama or any crops. Even our municipal agricultureist, uh, mentioned that they have already included this, uh, our annual investment plan about the conversion of area from ra, uh, banana, banana infected area to our crops. And, uh, other members of the committee, uh, asked, speaking for Honorable, if the area was, uh, under the contract with the multinational company or whatever, about, according to Ms. Siloy, uh, only two cars are still, uh, contract, and it will end on December twenty three, one. So, out of fifteen cars, only two cars are still contract, but it will end this February, December. So, at least I know for adoption of this committee report.
Thank you, to Director. There is no motion for the adoption of committee report number one four two, since two thousand twenty one. Any comments, remarks? Okay, this is done.
Thank you for support with the, uh, election of the pro-chairman, and they also emphasized, uh, during the committee, uh, Mrs. Siloy, uh, informing us, that the property hundred and fifty cars, fifteen cars, there are properties of like people owned by the grown company. Uh, di siya pwede, di siya marigot, no? But, uh, pwede siya ma, stiisyo na dia, in support sa to mga mga farmers, kung alas lego na produkto, no? Pwede siya gamit on ang mga kigol, okay? Atong taba, glabinas area, nga masugod na lahat ay kasa na, so, additional information na, uh, inay mi sa program, uh, inay ni paray, paro, kataba na di sila, okay? Ato na, kasi na, uh, uh, area.
Thank you, Honorable Director. Any other remarks, want to mention? No more, so, the motion, Honorable Director, is approved. Committee report number one, one four three, Honorable Director, and also one four four.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this. We have committee report number one four three, since two thousand twenty one. The member of this, uh, committee, under the Calamity Enterprise School. We have my vice co, Honorable David Romano, Honorable Danny, member, Honorable, uh, Danny Juan, member. Uh, uh, all leave, uh, absent, uh, for the report, Honorable, uh, Kamaas. Uh, okay.
Absent.
Other presents also, we have, uh, Honorable Natikeya, Honorable Ladasan, Honorable Hymaya, our living officer, Gary Richto, our traditional, Lincoln Z, University. Uh, during this, uh, committee report, committee hearing, we have, uh, a request coming from the Oma via, a former leader, address of my own bayan, for the request of the, once again, a second type of extension of the speed joint, no? From twenty day a month, to thirty day of, uh, every month, in the period, July to August. But, uh, during the, uh, discussion, uh, this, uh, Lincoln photo, uh, big manifestation that, uh, the request cannot be granted for someone to the seventy one sixty in our local, uh, court, uh, register decision, uh, one six A B, no? To say that, uh, our local government court, nineteen eighty one, hundred and ninety years, and station of billions, until six months period. Uh, grata, ang inaang, uh, ang inaang request, is a first request ilan to one, but under ilan sa first, uh, period of the body to do on that. So, uh, the second request is, uh, being scrutinized, no, by, uh, our, uh, but, Omo Spady, as we found out that, uh, there is, we, we, si nadie, we, there we can, uh, we can, uh, recommend, no? And one of those is, uh, amendments into an ordinance, no? For a, a, a permanent, no? Permanent, uh, payment from twenty day of the liberty day every month, or thirty day every month. So, uh, uh, we also found out that, uh, uh, the request is, uh, being also, uh, scrutinized, no, by, uh, di may di siya pwede, wala ma, makakabili siya automatically. But, I know that, uh, we have our, uh, uh, press reading on the, the ordinance, no? Amendment of this ordinance, on which the, uh, that it will be found for the request can be granted for a permanent, uh, speed joint, so, waiting for thirty, based on the local amendments of our ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support for the adoption of this, uh, committee report one four three, since two thousand twenty one.
Thank you, Honorable, no need, there is no motion for the adoption of committee report number one four three, since two thousand twenty one. Any comments, remarks? Hearing none, the motion is approved, and adopted. Committee report number one four four.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this. Committee report number one four four, the chair is of two thousand twenty one. We have Michael Chair, and the Calamity Enterprise, Honorable David Romano, Michael Chair, Honorable David Romano, Honorable Chief, uh, Doyan, member. Member, uh, Honorable, uh, Danny Juan, member. And, uh, other present, Honorable Natikeya, Honorable Ladasan, Honorable Hymaya, and living officer Gary Richto. This, uh, mission, committee report is, is, uh, the question, from, uh, living officer, the person of, uh, Mr. Gary Richto, for, uh, the Honorable, based on the longest bongo, uh, secretary, to a lot of people, or financial assistance intensive for the lari vendors in the parking market of the links quality, sato tomas, labo de nothings. During this discussion, uh, some of the Omo Spady, commenting, not for the infection for the lari, lari vendors, okay, but, we have others explain, no? For the small, no? Small, uh, vendors, no? Small, uh, uh, businesses, uh, individuals, no? Uh, all over, no? The entire locality of Santo Tomas, no? As per recommended by Honorable David Romano. So, this, uh, request, no? Uh, being, uh, uh, probably, Omo Spady, so, the request is probably, you know, not only for the lari, but, uh, the whole, uh, uh, school, no? Small vendors, including the mostly vendors, no? That in there, in the parking market, in the parking market, possibly. So, I support for this adoption, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable, there is no motion for the adoption of committee report number one four four, since two thousand twenty one. Is there any comments, remarks, or clarification? Honorable Romano.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this. In any show, uh, the president, he always, uh, the manager, sir, Honorable, and he told, uh, in any show, uh, we, we need the, the, what we recommend this, uh, after the discussion, we ask the, the, these of the, what, really, the title of our resolution, because this is complete, sir. Uh, in our municipality during the time, when a guy, he said, uh, he thought, he didn't, uh, salo, or percia, that may man criteria, may lafiti, may kathmai, all businesses consider this small business. Uh, all of these small businesses, the individuals, we have, we have the record in our, our municipal agency, okay? So, that is your comment, and regarding to your comment, no, I mean, uh, submit the, and submit the, the, this, uh, for evaluation, no? That is, uh, that is really the essence of this, uh, resolution. And I hope this happening, uh, I think only to, only to, for your hearing, of this, uh, resolution, we, what we need is to get the, the list of names, the entire municipal department, the government, and, uh, as the, this ability to jump in on the, uh, each title, uh, right, uh, and in the tawana. Hey, uh, what I, what I heard, other, uh, municipality is, uh, feeling is, na kaya si, di pa, to mga kathmai, mga kawan, is more ifepeyo sa, uh, the locality, may atap, uh, to ang mga votes, ang mga ano, probably na, kapos at the, uh, mark, bit market, uh, probably market, the laws, but, eh, kaya, is more business, ifepeyo, the town, the municipality, Santo Tomas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Para you, uh, maybe, uh, because this, uh, resolution, committee report number, uh, one four, one four four, we will talk about the small, uh, business, businesses, uh, if I can really discuss, uh, for I, because we don't know what is the definition of small business. And most of the tabangan, yo, is kato, walay, business termite, but, at kayo, mga, talaga , like, like, at labas, para lang makatao. So, dili, me, uh, pwede dili, icontribute, because, no, no, may tabo, di, uh, buo kayo po, magsumit, katabrezo, without, eh, di pa, it's, sa gitna, but, makadawat, kay, kung may una, tab small business.
o, may, uh, the small businessman, it's a very small businessman, walay definition, ba walay klaro. So, magbubok, diya, po, to, ma, five, yo, tiyagi na, to, committee, ba, na, mahatay, ano, no?
Lari, lari, special.
Because, pramang, may mga inseryo, diya, biling ng lari, apil na, to, mga tindira sa palikin, mga tindira sa mga, pindangan. So, kung sa'yo, diya, ang, atong i-injure, diya, sa, is, diya, diya, atong gusto, papangan, para klaro kay, biling pa, magot klaro, para sa kuha, naman.
Okay.
Okay, Obron Nandito, I'm Obron.
Okay. According, kung wala, ni, diya, to, di, sa, ang, diyo, sa, ma, request, a resolution, that intended for the lari itself, wala na, the problem, there is no details, we considering, other some, uh, considerations of small, uh, business, uh, individuals. If, maybe, that, during the discussion committee, but, than, kay, na, po, may, uh, ha, ba, to, mga, ban, na, man, huh, may, na, maling, diya, sa, mga, pariy, pariy, as what, Obron Dariromano, no, many, present, no, data, particular recommendations. So, ato, po, to, siya, di consider, but, kung, ato, siya, natuwa, bukukus, na, di, na, lari, we, biling, siya, no, biling, siya, big deal kay, intended for the lari, lari, because, may, diya, the problem, ah, sa, one, paling, kay, nakaproblema, na, sila, diya, to, po, kay, nasipare, ng lari, nasipare, ng, na, to, ang, uh, na, to, ang, mga, uh, planters, no? Nasipare, ng, na, to, ang, mga, kuwan, nasipare, ng, hining, uh, contract, kuwan, no? So, mga, na, to, trato, mga supplier, no? So, kung, ato, siya, tanawon, ang, di, no, di, to, sa, uh, the request, si, Mister Gary Rico, it is, po, di, lari itself, po, god, kala, kasi, dapat, uh, punta, or, siya, totally, na, ta, kayo, siya, as, to, tanawon. Uh, for, as what, we, many, present, Obron Dariromano, uh, na, to, tong, mga, interview, like, ato, mga, mga, nagsinado, mga, tinanbar, but, so, wala, kama, to, siya, kana, na, di, ako, muli, ato, no? Tapos, siya, nga, mga, uh, accommodation, di, na, tags, ato, ang, di, sa, bu, di, di, pasira, sila, karo, kana, mo, sila, ka, di, ba, ato. Uh, umi, na, la, na, to, ipanunta, na, kung, na, kama, siya, consideration, parts, ato, ring, tal. But, may, point, oh, kung, ato, la, di, siya, uh, tanawon, prati, na, mga, problema, ato, la, siguro, ni, ikuwan, sa lari. So, may, may, di, ang, nakita, kay, ang, takapalikin, may, di, na, nakita, ang, na, regent, na, kana, na, di, siya, oh, alivision, oh, parts, oh, kay, para, maka, prati, sila, no, siguro, like, di, what, oh, no? Say, na, mga, habits, di, boss, no, kana, kana, maka, kuwan, sila, as, so, mga, may, start, as, la, kana, ko, nakita, po.
Okay, thank you, Obron Nandito, ah, no, Obron Nandito.
Uh, sa, ku, la, ng, po, diya, kaya, diya, uh, may, support, kato, na, la, uh, pinoy, ni, mga, lari, lari, ng, lari, lari. Ang lari, lari, ng, po, diya, di, na, sila, to, buk, no? Wala, napabuk, ato, lari, lari.
At least thirty-five, sila, ato, na, sa, one, po.
At least thirty-five, lang, very specific, kahit, may, want, la, small farmers, uh, small businessmen, sa, tibo, po, si, pariy, to, San Tomas, twenty, na, bu, bu, kaba, kuma, kato, mga, changbi, changbi, di, ay, consider, na, sila, mga, small, o, wala, kay, sa, wala, to, pag, balite, na, small, siya, qualified, na, as, small, what, if, kato, iba, may, la, mga, small, no, po, wala? Wala, kay, wala, kay, basis, so, kama, to, siya, po, sa, lari, lari, lang, po, siya, biling, na, at, last, ku, ni, ba, kay, ano, man, ikaw, di, maka, lari, kato, mga, lari, lari, lang, di, very specific, so, yung, mini, diya, ma, may, siguro, wala, bu, bu. Kay, ano, man, na, may, specific, numbers, na, na, sila, no? Tapos, di, na, to, apilo, na, no, siguro, to, mga, mga, tindira, or, lari, mga, school, mga, small vendors, kay, kato, pinagbu, bu, di, napunt, to, kay, ano, man, kato, di, mga, lari, tindira, kato, di, sa, lari, mga, businessman, po, no? But, man, ato, to, sila, pero, kato, sa, lari, lari, ng, po, very specific, kasi, ay, ang, nag, iawis, mo, mura, pinaninda, wala, siya, tindira. So, kung, pinala, sila, na, bu, very specific, di ba, kato, mga, di, na, farmers, o, di, na, siya, ato, lari, lari, so, kala, na, siguro, para, na, kahit, utang, to, i, ma, is, bu, ni, po, po, is, consider, small, uh, businessman, kati, bu, mos, si, pariy, di, di, bu, ka. Kay, ano, man, claim, man, of, uh, key, os, kato, bu, ang, mga, iba, di, ay, di, man, po. So, keep, madab, di, man, instead, na, base, i-grant, no, base, biling, na, ino, di, maka, kita, di, na, na, mas, bu, bu, di, man, diya. Thank you, Mr. President. So, I, the support, kato, lari, lari, na, mas, bu, na, na, ato, ato, resolution.
Okay, thank you, Obron, uh, member. So, Obron, Roman.
Thank you, Mr. President, officer. So, I agree, the, the resolution, intended for lari, lari, and we, we will make another resolution for all, uh, all, all, small businessmen, which is the record, Mr. President, you, officer, is in our municipal licensing office, wala, the, some, of, we, okay, the record of all, small businessmen, have in our municipal licensing office, but, kato, to, pass, at, and then, the, if, at, is, the, body, the, very, very, in, at, the, part, kadaan, but, the, some, of, we, was, a, record. Wala, kama, kama, bu, bu, but, 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 but.
Okay, Obron Roman, about, you, for, uh, resolution, or, recommend, di, ha, please, do.
So, and then, uh, uh, for, uh, committee meeting, the record, describing, which, they, will, for, the, office, of the.
You mean, first, the, one, for, first, TV?
First, ready, first, ready.
So, for, expression, later, uh, later. I think you, uh, okay. So, any, other, remarks, clarification on this matter, or, lari, lari, or, di. No more, so, the motion, Obron, Obron, Lapi, no, is approved, uh, committee report number one four five, Obron Lapi, officer.
Thank you, Mr. President, officer. Once again, uh, committee report number one four five, series of two thousand twenty-one. Under the committee on, uh, ways and means and economic enterprise, uh, Obron, uh, the, uh, the, uh, uh, mga, ilhar, no? Uh, supposedly, up, at, many, na, up, at, here. So, myself, uh, then, uh, Obron Nautikilia, member, Obron Dariromano, members, committee members,
Public Cemetery of barangay San Miguel. So, there is a recommendation since the cemetery of barangay San Miguel has not been owned by the barangay. Says there, three hectares, ah, three hectares cemetery. Wala pa napa kain toro sa ilang na level man. After the representation of good, ah, good policy commission, may I give you? In the hand, nadaw ang scenario nga, ah, naong na bitaw nila. But wala sila ikatibayan nga, naong na nila maonguna katry hectares. But after the commission, and ano sila rehireng kulatir ya, so pojini nila di ato sa ready set bit. Palang matransfer ang maonguna katry hectares sa ilang barangay, barangay 2025. And na, kala dekisur by the cemetery. There are some recommendations, no, and, ah, ihan tag sa kuwa maan oban. But the bottom line is, ah, this are living in coaching, amended by the council of this year. And as, ah, if you have a kuwa mo sa postmani, congratulate that this group of ah, party officials. That amended receiving report since it was, ah, date amended as, ah, two thousand, two thousand five past, ah, ending for two thousand twenty one. So, I so want for the adoption of this, ah, committee report, number one, four, five, series of two thousand twenty one, sir.
Thank you. Number one, number two, for the adoption of committee report, number one, four, five, series of two thousand twenty one. Any comment, remarks, or clarification? The cell who like to clarify, ah, the correct man who is giving the honorable grandmaster, and his, ah, yes, ah. Honorable, the only grandmaster if I, the proposed cemetery of barangay San Miguel. For the residents of barangay will pay a amount of five thousand pesos. Renewable every ten years, amounting to three thousand pesos, while, what do you mean, while? Wala maparong para, kusak sa setting. What's the name of the, ah, musta napa clarify, what is this three thousand? Kala kala. Oh, kala kala, sir, sir, kala kala, sir. Did it? Did man masaktan? The, ah, the residents will pay the amount of five thousand renewable every ten years, amounting to three thousand pesos, while, man? Residents will pay ten thousand pesos. What's the thing, ten thousand, man? Billy? Did man masaktan? Okay, honorable grandmaster. For the commission, man, did man masaktan ang service?
Do you want more figure?
Okay. Ah, ah, sa partang, five thousand sa residents, non-resident, ten thousand, pero kala, three thousand, sa, sa?
Renewal picture.
Ah, wait.
Ang panutan na, ang liyani, panutan na ko, kaya nila manggung, will, please, ten thousand, no?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, ang panutan ito, dili pertama question, considering, kala nila ang pimen, mataas sa municipal, eh, panutan na, may, okay, di ba? Sabi ng bedka, panutan na, bu, pila, pala yang bayaran sa, ato ah, dinis, municipal, okay? Ang ordinas mga gusa, ang ordinas mga gusa barangay, sa, 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 na, dili, kuya dapat, mahal ang bayan, na, ito sa bayan, sa, sa, di ba? Dapat umbubuk, umbunadidang, toma na, ang panutan, untuk, tuma manatong, laamanda certification coming from di, di, mispati sere, di ba? Isipay mo niya, kaya ng lipu, mungut, bu, may, ten thousand, nila, ipa-bayad.
Four residents.
Yeah.
Boto ngay.
Yeah.
Pero kili, three thousand, bangs na, siya, nadibubuk, natamay, three thousand, as well, five, three, ten thousand, fish, amounting.
A ten thousand, um, atang bu, kala, residents, ten thousand, nila, bayad.
Pero kala, three thousand.
Dili, thirteen years, sa, sa, kung ano sa, dili, thirteen years. Borinnya, amo, dahan, resident, ang nila bayaran, di. Five thousand. Five thousand, ah?
Four thousand, sir.
Kala, resident, din, ang resident, ang, ang bayaran, sa, sa, ta kanina, five thousand, din, ang, niyo, is, ten thousand. Okay, ba? Manas, eh?
For residents, sir, five thousand, sir.
Kamali, um, kusak sa setting, di ba? Okay, ka. We hope, we, okay, ba, eh? So, any other clarification, marks? Okay, honorable, dihuan.
Di, ah, ah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. President. Ah, ang point naman, toan, is, ang kining, kining renewal, ba? Kaya po, the renewal, siya, ah, most likely, ang barangay mga area, um, after five years, kala, kasi, kada, kada, barangay ni, na, kuwan, siya. Harikoman, na kuwan, siya. So, pong, na renewal, or, magrenewal siya, babayad na kiriya, po, ino, ta, on, dili, siya, biling, dili, kala, handong, kaya, ito, di man, mapuro, kaya, lahat, diya. So, suposidin, na, kita, siya, 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 kun, nakakanan, renewal, wala, ng, di, pang, bay, kaya, kung, one, after ten years. Pero, ilan, gula, after, three years, ilan, kagidan, di, um, batala, mapuro, kaya, diya.
Reconsidering the Bananay Council for the Protection of Children of Bananay San Jose Santo Tomas Damo de Norte. And the other one is draft resolution number 147, confirming Bananay Executive Order Number 02, 2021 issued by Honorable Yoloyon Boyo on Bananay San Jose. And order reorganizing, reconsidering, they allow the council to waste money on a board of Bananay San Jose Santo Tomas Damo de Norte.
Thank you, honorable Yoloyon. There is now a motion, the parties have drawn resolution number 146 and 147, all series of 2021 for second reading, eighty seconds for the motion. It is unanimous, this candidate, the honourable expression, supporter's speech, read, any discussion, clarification, remarks, hearing now, the motion is approved for second reading.
All are greeting, Mr. President, welcome, move to pass, draft resolution number 146, 7 of 2021, and draft resolution number 147, 7 of 2021.
Thank you, honorable Yoloyon. As many as a favor for the passage of draft resolution number 146 and 147, all series of 2021, for the third and final reading, please raise your hand.
Now we will be shaking off this round of presenting members, moving on.
So draft resolution number 146 and 147, series of 2021 is approved for the third and final reading. Next, Honorable Lago, attempts number four and five.
Therefore, effort number four, a draft resolution of number 148, series of 2021, confirming Bananay Council as number 2021 of Bananay Council San Miguel, in acting, revise reading for the Bananay San Miguel Santo Tomas Damo de Norte. So, as, uh, in connection for a different which is, uh, uh, resolution, etc., and you will wait for the second round of our process, so you will just leave here.
Thank you, Honorable Lago. Uh, there is now a motion, that draft resolution number 148, series of 2021 be deferred, and I will go back to committee meeting this coming, with the for further discussion. Any second to the motion, for each our department, it is counted by honourable expression, so, draft resolution number 148, series of 2021 is deferred for further discussion. At your five.
Draft resolution number 149, series of 2021, requesting Honorable Christopher Lawrence Boyo, our senator to allocate funds, as financia racist and intended for la ray la ray windows in the municipality of Santo Tomas Damo de Norte and what, etc.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, thank you, honorable Lago. There is now a motion, for the passage of draft resolution number 149, series of 2021, for the, for second reading, eighty seconds for the motion. It is counted by honourable expression, supporter's speech, read, read, any discussion, Honorable Santo Tomas, Honorable Lago.
It's sort of suggestion, we have to deal with this, no business or we will, we will.
Okay. Okay, thank you, honorable Lago. Honorable, Honorable. Okay, so, Mr. President, you also share, any, uh, the one who, who, if we just this, uh, resolution, can we, can we, directly my name, but the author, I'm not a senior. The author of your vote, my. Okay, open, honorable Lago. This is not, okay, any other remarks, or clarification, mark, the motion is approved for second reading, more for reading.
We listen for the, Mr. Chair, draft resolution number 149, series of 2021, requesting Honorable Christopher Lawrence Boyo, senator, to allocate funds, as financia racist and intended for our la ray la ray windows in the municipality of Santo Tomas Damo de Norte, I sum up, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Lago. As many as a favor for the passage of draft resolution number 149, series of 2021, for the third and final reading, please raise your hand, mark.
Now we will decide, Mr. Chairman, honourable presenting members, go next, please.
Honorable expression, okay, for yes, so draft resolution number 149, series of 2021, is approved for the third and final reading. Will you proceed to urgent procedure?
This is the last, Mr. Chairman, one, a draft resolution number 150, series of 2021, a draft resolution requesting all honourable senators, through Senate across that honourable sentences, so for the court, to pass not approve the bill for anything Bananay could have even municipal against Santo Tomas Province of Dalawa de Norte into a regular Bananay. The first, and final reading.
Thank you, Honorable Lago. There is now a motion for the passage of draft resolution number 150, series of 2021, for the first and final reading, for the, eighty seconds for the motion. It is counted by honourable expression, supporter's speech, read, any discussion, Honorable, enjoy.
For the report, for the report, uh, it is true that we will pass a special resolution, we request, uh, that you would like to, uh, have the secretary, uh, what are, if there is the, kind of, one, uh, uh, any required from the Senate, for our last, uh, resolution, wala, wala yun.
Wala sir, wala kami naangangangang, we already see the all reason.
Last, when or last June?
Last June, sir.
Last June, ah, at one.
Very good.
Yes, yes, so, but so far, wala kay, uh, reply, uh, thank you, thank you, honorable Yoloyon. Okay, Honorable.
As a matter of suggestion, Mr. President, let us not send this through, uh, this, you're carrying, ah, postal, but after the resolution has been done, uh, we will send it to the office of Congressman Adam DuHali, so that he staff will pass the thing, the sending of this to the House of Senate.
Okay, thank you, honorable Yoloyon, okay. Any other remarks, clarification? Honorable President.
Point of clarification, aside from the resolution, is there any attachment, no, to be included in the resolution, example, number, six, eight, number, household, yung, ah, resolution, number, eight, eight, eight? Please, don't forget.
Uh, doing the documents supporting the request, has already been forwarded to the second tier of both houses. Now, that's why I wanted Congressman Adam DuHali, keba, mahumanan ang atong turn taroon, vivid pa ma, atro pahanas sa selling, and iyan, hangi, nga, wiri, we have to have the case for resolution, and, uh, he will handle it personally, uh, so that, once, uh, the bill is approved in the Senate, ngatama ngunit siya may pa wika, ikasama ngitutsya, and, uh, mahaminkang ledak, the Justice Executive, uh, Development Advisory Council, uh, the Justice Executive, uh, Office of the President, so that, once the bill becomes an important one, the Office of the President would sign immediately after the passage of the bill, in the Senate, thank you.
Okay, thank you, honorable Yoloyon, okay. Any other clarification? No more, so the motion is approved for the third and final reading. Okay, any announcement? Honorable, the mayor, announcement.
Thank you, uh, Representative, uh, this is not an announcement, but, uh, I would like to ask from our, uh, secretary, are you ready to propose, uh, ordinance of the operation of drones, so, na, we can include this, uh, proceeding?
Sir, na ako first aidin at awi, doon, sir, eh, sunod na nato siya eh, then, ando siya sa committee here, and this Monday, Wednesday.
Okay, okay. So, we have to invite our, uh, probably two week.
Yeah, maybe, is it okay, sir?
Uh, okay, 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 so say, okay, is it okay?
And then, uh, I would like to request that you will give a copy of the draft resolution to each member of the council.
Yes, uh, sir, sir, sir. Uh, we must be our, uh, LR to, to be happy for some.
Hello, may good, ah, sa motor, para sa.
Thank you, uh.
So, okay, Honorable, uh, the last one, and then.
Aside from those person mentioned, we'll be invited, I would like to request to invite the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. Eh, siyamay, may, siyamay, mukpa ni tan, ano, ang angusianti, diba?
Siyari, di, patanga, mukpa ni, diba?
Okay, na, jangan invite to, diba, eh, parang, maka, abis, yata, discussion.
Okay, may, uh, eh, sila, na, balik ya, seblong.
Eh, makai, regulation, mga, eh, lagi, cot, kung invite to, ano, ang angusianti, diba, eh, parang, maka, sila daan, maka, participate in discussion.
This is the committee, sir, first discussion, mga, na, session, yes, sir. Ah, any final statement? First discussion, mga, na, session.
Okay, then, balik ya, mga. Speaking, um, bro, we demand, ah, maka, kuta, atong, eh, picture, ah, naso, ngayon, sa, saka, ngayon, sa, ingan, depende na, sa capability, sa, tao.
Leakinga, na, lahat, sa, eh, ah, 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 civil association, eh, you know, civil association, the Philippines, dinikka, maka, poses, ah, dinikka, dari, ka, paring, marap, pa, nila, ah, na, dinikka, maka, paring, kung, wala, kaka, ay.
Yeah, dito, sa, draft, sir, ah, corporate.
So, by speaking, we need to invite businessman during the discussion, eh, we are going, what, the, you, in, the, okay, no?
How do we add, by those owners of drone, by, you know, my records? Pero actually, oh, actually, pwedeng na, maka, pasan na, pwedeng na, maka, pasan na, during the public hearing, diba?
Yeah. Anyway, for a, a discussion, mga, na, say, you know.
And, in fact, we will also invite the, ah, ah, namas, the officer, for.
Yeah, we know, we, sir.
So, we will invite, uh, uh, kaya, uh, uh.
Namas, eh, ah, kung, kung, eh, na, lang, si, bro, para, na, eh.
Sir, karama na, to, ita, confirmation, para, kita, may, ba, eh, pos, kain, duna, si, ah, para, sa, yung, ang, eh, eh, mga, eh, eh.
For long period, next, next week, na, si, bro, na, pero, invite, na, sa, ka, ah, tadi, we are from, honorable Yoloyon.